So, good evening, everyone. I don't have a gavel, so I can't gain your attention beyond yelling. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. So, first and foremost, I want to welcome everyone to this evening's public hearing regarding the potential annexation of Wilkinsburg. I want to thank you all for coming. What I would like to do is, first, I need to acknowledge for the record that we are joined by Councilman Burgess and Council President Smith. Before moving forward, I would like to turn it over to President Smith if she wants to provide remarks. She says we can proceed forward. With that being said, I want to give you all just five, a minute worth of background and explanation as to why we're here today and then what this process is going to look like moving forward. As you all are clearly aware, there was a petition that was sent to City Council that we had to vote on on whether or not to approve putting on the ballot the question of annexation. And as you all are fully aware, it was voted down. Each member can certainly speak for themselves, but I believe at the core of the reason for voting it down were two things. One, the majority of members felt as if we did not have enough information to make a very informed decision about what annexation into the city of Pittsburgh would actually look like and what it would mean for the city of Pittsburgh as well as for Wilkinsburg. And so because of that, we didn't feel comfortable voting at that time. I think the other sort of main reason that we also decided to vote it down was that we had not had a proper opportunity to have what I would call two conversations. One with your government and your residents, right? And then one with our residents within the city of Pittsburgh. And so because of that, that was another reason why we decided to vote down in exchange for more time to better study the actual issue itself. With that being said, President Smith then introduced legislation that would create a task force to actually study this issue and determine, and not fully determine whether or not we should vote to have annexation, but what if it occurred, what it would look like for the city so that we could have all the information and then make an informed decision one way or the other, however individual council members so choose. And so she appointed a task force. Myself as the chair, Councilman Burgess essentially as the co-chair, then Councilman Coghill, and Councilwoman Gross also sit on the task force. Since that time, we've, I've reached out to Ms. Edwards to have an initial conversation to sort of say, "We're beginning to have this conversation. We would at some point like to talk to your council about it so you understand what we're doing and the information we're seeking to gain." We had a productive conversation with your mayor on Tuesday, actually, Mayor Comans, where we also talked about while we're going to be holding meetings in the city of Pittsburgh to hear from residents, we would also like, if you were willing to invite us in, we would like our council to be able to come to Wilkinsburg to hear directly from your residents. And I believe the mayor was amenable to that. And he also said that he would be reaching out to council to have that conversation so that we could get dates scheduled so that we could come in to hear directly from you all. So with all that being said, we are looking to do, we're on a fact-finding mission. We're not here to make any determinations this evening. We're not here to say if we're for annexation or against it. Rather, we're here to get as much information as humanly possible. We're working over the course of the summer to produce an internal report to members of council that will say by subject matter, by the Public Works Division, by public safety, by financing law, this is what annexation, the effect it would have on the city. Now, we can begin to study and begin having a more informed conversation. During that whole process, we also want to make sure that we're providing opportunities to hear from the public so that can also become a part of the actual document, which is why we're here this evening. So again, what I would like to do is just go through a quick presentation that will take less than five minutes that begins to set the stage for a conversation as we know it. This is not to convince you that this makes sense. It's not to convince you that it does not make sense. It's simply, here's the baseline of information that our residents should be, at least be aware of to begin starting the conversation. So, first and foremost, as I believe we all can attest, we are one of the most decentralized governments in the entire country. We have more within our county government structure. We have more municipalities than any other county in the country.
That's not true. That alone makes us more.
I'll stand corrected and I'll double-check my facts. I thought we were number one, but I would certainly double-check that. Needless to say, we do have 460 municipalities within Allegheny County, Wilkinsburg obviously being one of them. The city of Pittsburgh has 303,000 residents. Wilkinsburg has 15,000 residents. And Wilkinsburg is 1/20th the size of the city of Pittsburgh.
In the ideal size.
I'm not here to dispute that one way or the other. Madam President, I asked that I remind everyone that this is a deed of public hearing, so we ask you not to speak during presentation, but you will also, you will be given time to speak to council so that you could hold your comments. Thank you. Wilkinsburg and Pittsburgh, each municipality, school district have successfully combined several functions over the last 15 years, just so residents are fully aware of what we already do. As of 2006, Wilkinsburg contracted with the city of Pittsburgh Sanitation Department to provide waste removal. In 2011, Wilkinsburg fully integrated the Wilkinsburg Fire Department into Pittsburgh's department. And in 2015, Wilkinsburg consolidated their middle and high school students into the Pittsburgh public system. Regarding the Wilkinsburg/Pittsburgh Firehouse consolidation, the numbers will suggest that it was a benefit to both Wilkinsburg and the city of Pittsburgh, that we were able to extend our reach, we were able to provide more service and spend less per capita and spend more per acre. We were able to increase the population served, increase the amount of land covered, and increase in the cost of protection. And we were able to preserve all Wilkinsburg jobs in that merger. In terms of the garbage collection, the garbage service that you have signed up with the city of Pittsburgh has saved you approximately, Wilkinsburg, $680,000. Previously, you contracted with Waste Management, which was a private firm based out of Texas, I do believe. And since then, there's been, there's been annual savings to the borough of Wilkinsburg. It should also just be noted for the record that providing services, the city of Pittsburgh providing services to boroughs and regions outside the city is not necessarily new for us. In 2015, Pittsburgh City Council members voted unanimously to provide fire services, our fire protection services to Ingram. Currently, in Mount Oliver, we provide EMS services, and they also have a shared school board. Also, regarding Millville's water system, Pittsburgh took over that water system in 2009, which then allowed for necessary upgrades to be made to it. As we understand it right now, it is our understanding that Wilkinsburg has suffered a loss in population and has a declining tax base, as well as one of the highest property tax bases in our region, which makes thus the ratio between revenue and expenditures This slide basically says the same thing, but in a different way, that there is our understanding at this current time, a detriment between what's the revenue projected to come in versus the expenditures projected to go out from Wilkinsburg. And because of that, it is our understanding that that's why some have brought this issue to our table for conversations. With that being said, I'm gonna pause. We do have people that have registered to speak, and so I'm gonna ask them to come forward to speak now. Anyone else wishing to speak, you will also be given time. I will ask you to please come to the microphone, state your name, where you live, for the record, and you will be given three minutes to speak before City Council. So our first registered speaker is Aikahana Hal Malkina, whom I do not see with us here this evening. Our second speaker is Rick Grada, okay, thank you, who also is not here. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. With that, I will turn it over to anyone else wishing to speak before City Council at this time. Please come forward. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please, we do need you to speak actually into the mic in the middle of the room because this is officially being recorded and will be shown on our Cablecast News Channel. So we have to have you recorded on the mic for our audit.
Does anyone want to speak?
Yes, sir. Just go right to the mic.
Good evening, Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Smith. My name is William Smith III. I'm first-year councilman of Wilkinsburg. And Councilman Lavelle, you pointed out that there was a couple other municipalities that you actually have taken over some of the services for, but are you acquiring, in the process of acquiring any of those, like Millville or Ingram, that was on the chart that you, is actually giving services to the city of Pittsburgh is?
So respectfully, during a public hearing, we listen to the public. After all comment is made, we will then, we can then respond to questions. So I'm not, I'm not being rude. We don't respond in the moment. We respond after.
It's the way it's been presented, it's a lot of misinformation. We're here for facts, okay? And I want to make sure the facts are stated. Okay, Wilkinsburg pays for the garbage service. We pay, there's no municipality that's gonna allow you to put your students in their school district free, okay? We pay for tuition for each town that tends Pittsburgh schools, okay? We also pay for the fire services, okay? And Wilkinsburg is not a distressed community. I want to make that for a fact to let everybody know that, okay? We're not distressed, okay? We're solvent, a budget's balanced, okay? And we could develop our own borough. We know, you know, development is at our steps. And I do believe that, you know, this has been, we've been targeted, okay? Because, you know, we have opportunity in Wilkinsburg. And I take my hat off to the council people before me. They held on, they maintained, and they made something out of nothing, okay? And we used to sustain the government. And I don't want to see nobody take it away from us. We can run our, we've been running our borough for 100 years, and we can continue to run our borough. We appreciate your concern for Wilkinsburg. We applaud it, and we'd love to work with you, but I don't want to give our government up.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
What else? Do you need anything else? Okay. So I'm looking at whatever, whatever page this is. And it says, "Without a merger, Wilkinsburg will experience a growing deficit as personal costs outpace revenue, and high property taxes and poor services constrain tax-based growth." The first thing I want to mention, I'll take this off. The first thing I want to mention is that we're using the word merger and annexation interchangeably, and they're not interchangeable. An annexation is completely different, and this perpetuates a confusion that was started by the CDC in Wilkinsburg because they came out of the gate saying it's a merger. It is not. And we need to look at it as an annexation, which is a takeover, okay? And it can involve gentrification. And that's what we need to look at. How does it affect the races? How does it affect the income? And to make statements like this, I really have a problem with that. It's a very broad statement. And also, the city of Pittsburgh is losing population. And we need to look at, Pittsburgh needs to look at, we need to look at, and Wilkinsburg, why is the population going down, in fact, across Pennsylvania? So just sucking up other communities may not be the answer. I don't think it's the answer. We need to look at and find out what is the problem and problem solve, not keep sucking up because you've sucked up other areas and the population continues to decline. So you haven't looked at the really burning issue. Wilkinsburgers enjoy being independent. We enjoy that. We enjoy our community. And for the most part, people do not want to annex or be taken over. And there's no, there's no prominence in this packet saying what's gonna happen with the tax money. You know, everyone's saying, "Oh, the taxes are gonna go down." We don't know. We know that in Pittsburgh, it isn't equally spread out amongst all the communities. Some communities look way better, and they get better services, and other communities are neglected. So these are the issues we need to look at and not get information from the CDC in Wilkinsburg where they make pretty packets with a lot of misinformation and confusing information. Thank you.
Thank you. Other side. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I see it. Kate Luxembourg. I am not a member of Wilkinsburg Borough Council. I'm a longtime resident and homeowner and data analyst. I've paid attention to Wilkinsburg primarily delinquent taxes for many, many years. I have snapshots, starting with year 2006, quarterly, of what our delinquent tax, real estate tax situation is. And I agree with this statement, underlying property tax revenue will remain stagnant without tax-based growth or increased tax rates. We need in Wilkinsburg tax-based growth, and that is bring back the non-performing properties. We're about 7,000 properties. About 2,000 of them haven't performed for years. If we can get them back into the tax base, some with new construction, some have viable houses on them that could be refurbished, and that is the best kind of affordable housing because it already exists, we will have our tax-based growth. That is the redevelopment that we want. Redevelopment for people who live in Wilkinsburg and need affordable housing and don't want to be pushed out by higher property value. Higher property values good for the seller, not good for the buyer. And people are pushed out and go to wherever they can find someplace else to rent. We don't want that. That's not the development that we want in Wilkinsburg. And we are financially solvent now. Our borough is financially solvent. All this stuff was published without consulting with our finance director. We've got a great credit rating. If we bring those properties back, we're gonna be great. And we're gonna be great for the people who already live in Wilkinsburg. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Burgess, and President Cale Smith. My name's Denise Edwards. I'm a Wilkinsburg resident and president of council. I want to just build on a few things that Mr. Smith said. In 2006, actually, the contract on garbage saved 11 jobs in the city of Pittsburgh, all of whom are Pittsburgh residents. Had we not done that contract, those 11 folks would have been out of a job. So it's a mutual, and going forward, it's always been for the 100 and whatever years, it's always been mutual cooperation between the borough of Wilkinsburg and the city of Pittsburgh. East Hills kids play in our Little League and midget football. Our motto is "No Child." We say, we do not say no to any child. But what strikes me about this discussion is it's all about convincing Wilkinsburgers. And so far, I haven't heard anything from outside of the city council representatives from the residents of the city of Pittsburgh as to how they feel about this. And that's one of the reasons we came this evening. And let me just end by saying that we would deeply appreciate in continuing our longstanding cooperation with the city of Pittsburgh, that your inquiries from City Council and other parts of the city government come to the borough. Come to the borough of Wilkinsburg located at 605 Ross Avenue, 15221. And we will be more than happy to provide you with all the information, financial, real estate, how many trucks we have in DPW, and that we also manage to get to the various meetings, our finance department, the elected officials that you're conducting going forward in this process through the end of, through the spring and the end of summer. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity this evening. And come to Wilkinsburg when you get a chance.
My name is Carl Sutter, and I am a city resident. I just want to speak because I've been following this. The councilwoman and I went through 10 years of a community development organization in the West End that was called the West Pittsburgh Partnership for Regional Development. The only regional development they ever did in the West End was they stole $5 million of community development block grant money. They sold property to board members like it was water. So they're gone now after trips to the IRS, the FBI, the Attorney General, anybody we could think of. So as a city resident, I say, "Keep Wilkinsburg independent because my dealings with CDC's no good."
Thank you for having this meeting tonight. My name is Renee, and I'm a Wilkinsburg resident. And the one thing that I want to make really clear to you is that Wilkinsburg is not a failing borough. We love our DPW. If you go on Facebook over this winter, people were just crowing about how clean our streets were. It was like, you know, your dining room table, how clean things were. We have wonderful DPW. They live in our borough. They care about our borough. And we love our schools. And I know that Wilkinsburg schools have a terrible rep, but my son went to Fox Chapel Country Day School first, right? So I could put him in private school, but he hated it. I ended up at Wilkinsburg, and he loved it. It was the best education he's had. For seventh grade, he went to Westinghouse for three weeks, and I pulled him out of Pittsburgh Public Schools, and we went somewhere else. So I already know, so when you talk about Wilkinsburg like it's some kind of failing community, it's not. We're a tight-knit community. We love our services. We love our schools. We love being independent. And the information that you have, I've talked to our finance director. She actually sent me a report because when you go to the wilkinsburgmerger.com, it says, "Oh, my God, they're gonna be bankrupt by 2025." And then you call the finance director, and it's like, "No, we're fine. We're doing great. We have more, we're getting more and more, more abundant properties are getting back on the books. We have more tax revenue. We're more efficient with our services." So we're not failing. We're not asking you for help. I know that there is the WCDC who is pushing this, and Bruce Kraus said it really well at the Pittsburgh meeting. We all know what's going on here, right? This really is about gentrification. This is about that development money. This is about making a fortune for bankers and developers. Don't take over our community to enrich people who don't even live in Wilkinsburg. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? No? Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you all. I am glad that you did mention that you're not gonna ignore the residents of Wilkinsburg. I really appreciate that, that you want to come in and hear from us, and I thank you for that. I would like to see the city of Pittsburgh focus on more things that are issues to your city than focus on things with Wilkinsburg. For instance, I would like to see the city of Pittsburgh do more investment in people instead of buildings and structures. People, such as the youth program. Remember years ago when they had the summer youth program? The children grew up with a responsibility and knowing how to earn money instead of sitting around playing with electronics and parents giving them money. But the youth, the youth programs were great for the children, and I would like to see you all focus on something like that. Bring the summer youth programs back. And far as building, build on some of that empty land in Pittsburgh if they want to build and develop. There's a bunch of empty land filled with brush and trees and weeds, and build on that. And I want to see Pittsburgh focus on being more, having more equality in the city. It is so lopsided that there's no African-American voice for Pittsburgh, in Pittsburgh. It's just nothing for us. I would like to see you all focus on that versus trying to annex Wilkinsburg. But I thank each of you all for coming out tonight, and I hope this all turns out well. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call for anyone else wishing to speak. If not, that'll end our speaker portion of the meeting. We now have an opportunity to turn it over to colleagues to provide comment should they wish to. What I do want to simply say, if you ask a comment, you ask a question, the answer is no, we are not taking over any of those other municipalities. But to be clear, while it's not legally allowed, right? The city of Pittsburgh cannot legally by state laws simply go in and take over any other municipality. It has to be initiated.
So we're just in this predicament because of CDC.
It has to be initiated by the actual voters of said municipality. So this was initiated by people in Wilkinsburg, Rock City.
The politicians.
Right. So we couldn't say, "We want to take over Millville." Millville residents would have to say, "We want to be, we want to be annexed by the city of Pittsburgh." That's why that doesn't happen. Yes, sir. Council President Smith? I need you to speak today for our audience.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I just want to say that this has been a challenging situation. And I've had the privilege of talking to many of you and working with many of you in the past. I think that we want to deal with best that Pittsburgh and Wilkinsburg are now, and we're gonna get to the council area, but I do know that we want to be able to help Wilkinsburg. But I also have residents on my side of town that we struggle, and we do currently struggle with a lot of dollars. Madam Clark is changing out the microphone.
The battery is dead.
Thank you, Madam Clark. We do have a lot of properties in my own district that are vacant, and we have not been able to address those with the budget that we have with the city of Pittsburgh currently. So I'm not gonna pretend that, and I also feel like we're constantly fighting for attention in the West, and we're battling with the East End who gets a lot of attention, which I'm an East End girl, I was born and raised on Fifth Avenue. So believe me, I value the East End. I know how important they are to the city of Pittsburgh, but I also want the West and the South to get some of the attention and funding and development on our side of town. And so for me, I'm gonna keep watching on, watching those things if I don't see a benefit to our side of town. I don't know how far, before I start saying a lot more than I'm saying right now, but it will be very quickly if I don't start seeing some benefit to this, to our side of town as well. But having said that, I also don't want to throw Wilkinsburg under the bus and the Wilkinsburg residents. We want to stand with you and make your community the best both of our communities can be. So let's try to figure this out together.
So one of the things I think that we need to be very clear about is, we won't make this decision. Wilkinsburg will make this decision. Wilkinsburg will always make this decision. The city of Pittsburgh has no interest. We did not start, initiate any of these actions. The way this works, annexation works, is that 5% or more of the residents of Wilkinsburg will sign a petition requesting an annexation vote. It will not be the city. We did not, we will not start this. We will not initiate this. We won't, that's not what we'll do. It will be Wilkinsburg residents who will or not present this process of annexation to the council. So I want to make it very clear that we are forced to respond to something that we will not start and have no interest in starting. That's number one. So if Wilkinsburg does not start this, it never comes. So if Wilkinsburg does not start this, it never comes to us, and we won't, you know, we'll keep doing what we do. Now, once 5% or more voters in a petition go to the court, and the court decides those petitions are valid, then the judge requires us to make a decision. And then our decision is not whether to annex you or not, we don't have that power either. The only power we have is whether or not we will allow your voters to decide. At the end of the day, it will never be a Pittsburgh decision, this will always be a Wilkinsburg decision. And so what I think, and I said this privately, I'll say this publicly, if I was against annexation, I would not spend my time talking to council or the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. If I was against annexation, I would spend all of my time organizing the voters of the city of Wilkinsburg, because at the end of the day, those are who are going to make this decision. It will not be city council, it will be the voters of Wilkinsburg. And so I would spend 95% of my time organizing the voters of Wilkinsburg, and only 5% of my time trying to convince the members of city council. That's my honest advice, and I would say it to anyone who will listen. The last thing is, I don't know what's right yet, and I'm trying to figure that out. What we've heard, and we have to find out what the truth of it is, we've heard very dire predictions of what will happen to Wilkinsburg if there is no, if there is no something different that happens. That may be false, but the data that we've seen and received by third parties suggests that the future of Wilkinsburg is actually very bleak. And so the reason we're having this process is we want to figure out the truth, right? We want to know what the future is, is going to be of Wilkinsburg, and as the council president says, what then if you are annexed with us, what then does that do to the city of Pittsburgh? So we want to see what happens to you if we do annex you, what happens to you if you don't, and then what happens to us if we do annex you. And so we don't know the answers, and that's this process that we're engaged in now, is to spend six months trying to figure that out. And again, we may figure it out, and 5% of your voters may not sign a petition, and it never comes to us. Again, we will only be, I saw like a broken record, we will react to the citizens of Wilkinsburg. We will never initiate this, we have no interest in initiating. We are simply going to react if we are court ordered to respond. If we're not court ordered to respond, then after this process is over, you won't hear from us at all.
Thank you. With that, just for note, the next public hearing is scheduled for April 14, I believe, at the YMCA on Bennett Street in Homewood. So feel free to share that information with any and all. And with that, motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you all.